Clear, go ahead.
So we're live?
We're live and ready.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Chaska City Council meeting for Monday, October 19th, 2020. We're here again at the event center. I am zooming in tonight because of COVID exposure, so I have to zoom in per quarantine process. So I will be doing this remotely. It will be a little bit challenging, so bear with us. With that, will you please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Nate, will you call roll, please?
That's Councilmember Hatfield.
Here.
Hubbard.
Here.
Number Wong.
Here.
Mayor Winchell.
Here. Moves us to item four, adopting the agenda. There are no corrections, additions. I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
I can't tell who that was.
By Councilmember Hatfield.
So a motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
Second by Hubbard.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard to adopt the agenda discussion. Hearing none. Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Councilmember Wong.
Hi.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Yes.
Councilmember Gra.
Yes.
Mayor Winchell, yes, passes five oh. Moves us to visitor presentation. Tonight, we have with us via Zoom as well. We have Len Simic, the Chief Executive Officer and General Manager of Southwest Transit. So Len, the floor is yours. Welcome. Appreciate you joining us and giving us. I know it hasn't been very good times here, but hopefully, as your presentation says, good news at the end. So but please go ahead.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I do have a couple of members of my staff here with me. I'm a little challenged when it comes to technology, so I have them here to help me along as well. That's Jason Kirsch. And then I have Ben Schuler as well. One of our board members appointed by the city of Chaska, Bob Repke is also with us, and I think he'll have a few words towards the end. So I'm just going to start off with the PowerPoint presentation. And really what I'm going to cover this evening is the our response to COVID, as well as some other potential threats as we see them looming out there. So with that, Ben, can you put that up?
Good, I need the host to allow me to.
Oh. Okay, we need the host to allow us to have access to that screen?
Yep, Ben, you should be good to go now. Ben, you should be all set.
There we go. Okay. So basically, just an overview. Most of you know Southwest Transit. We were formed back in 1986. We were formed by the city of Chaska, Chanhassen, and Eden Prairie. We have seven-person commission. Six are made up from city representatives. One must be an elected official. And the seventh is actually appointed by the city reps, and that individual generally is a rider. Pre-COVID, we provided about 1.2 million rides, 160 bus trips per day with 75 buses. Like I said, most of you know us. Many of you may have taken some of our special event services down to places like Twins Games, Viking Games, and the State Fair. So COVID-19, as it hit, it hit our industry as a whole very hard, as you can imagine. But it hit suburban transit providers like Southwest very hard, probably harder than most, because our customer base is made up of what the industry calls choice riders. Now, choice riders isn't like when you go buy steak and you get the best cut as choice. While we consider our riders that, what it means is you have an option. You have a choice to either take the bus or take a car. And the majority of our ridership is made up of those individuals that do have other options available to them. Initially, we lost over 90% of our riders. And as you can guess, you lose the riders, you're also losing the revenue that they're putting in the fare box. We took action fairly quickly out of the gate, and unfortunately, we had to furlough or eliminate over 50% of our workforce. We reduced our service by over 60%. We did receive some federal help with the CARES Act funding, which makes up about 20% of our annual fare box revenue, far from the dollars we're losing. But it does help us in terms of how we're trying to balance things out. And then we have taken numerous safety measures to increase the customer employee confidence in getting back onto a bus. I'll just point out the two pictures you see. The top picture is a picture of our Chaska ramp. That was taken last week. Normally, on a weekday, that bottom level is 100% full, and you can see it's far from that. So I'll play just a quick little video. It just takes a few minutes, but it kind of gives an overview of what we're doing in terms of on the bus.
Hello, I'm Len Simic, CEO of Southwest Transit. I'm speaking today as we deal with one of the most serious pandemics ever to impact the health and welfare of our country, COVID-19, otherwise known as the coronavirus. Once this pandemic is controlled, I want you to be assured Southwest Transit will be there for all your commuting needs. Our current practice of cleaning and disinfecting buses and stations will not decrease, because your safety, as well as the safety of our employees, has and always will be our top priority.
The coronavirus, COVID-19, has changed our way of life. Your everyday activities, like going to the grocery store, a meal at your favorite restaurant, getting a haircut, attending a sporting event, and even your commute to work, has been suddenly altered. Social distancing has become the new norm. Having to distance ourself is very difficult. All the things we take for granted in life have suddenly become inaccessible. For all of us here at Southwest Transit, we believe we will overcome all the obstacles created by the COVID-19 pandemic. Dating back to the period right after 9/11, Southwest Transit has had an emergency preparedness plan in place to deal with difficult times like these. Our emergency preparedness plan includes a number of different protocols that we can enact to ensure the safety, overall health, and well-being of our passengers. At Southwest Transit, the overall cleanliness of our vehicles and facilities has always been paramount. We take the utmost care in making sure all our facilities are clean and sanitized twice daily. We take extraneous measures that include a complete sanitization of door handles, elevators, tables, drinking fountains, bathrooms, diaper-changing stations, benches, countertops, vending machines, handrails, glass, and customer service kiosks. Our fleet of Southwest Transit buses and prime vehicles is cleaned numerous times daily, including in-between runs. This includes handrails, driver areas, bus seats, cup holders, and tray tables. In combination with that, the air you breathe in the vehicles is also cleansed. The onboard air is cleaned by state-of-the-art air filters that capture unhealthy particles. These filters are changed out regularly to ensure the air that you breathe receives the most effective filtration possible. Electrostatic fogging machines are also used after each run our buses make. These machines are designed to make the sanitizing products stick to every surface it encounters, ensuring that the bus is ready to go for a safe, clean, and comfortable ride for the next passengers. The buses are also rotated in and out of service to ensure that each bus is cleaned even more thoroughly every other day.
As we continue to deal with COVID-19, take care of yourself, your family, your neighbors, and remember, Southwest Transit will be here when you're ready to get back to work and play. For Southwest Transit, I'm Len Simic.
So that kind of gives you a brief overview. We actually did that shortly after everything was shut down, the stay-home order was put into place. We, to continue with that plan, what we've done is we've we've set ourselves up to start adding services back as the demand starts to increase, and so we can maintain our social distance requirements on the bus. We continue with the same level of high level of cleaning and disinfecting vehicles, but there are a few other things that we've done since that video was released. If you look top right-hand, the picture there, those are actual row separators. So besides the driver being encapsulized in the front, each row is divided with plexiglass, and we block off the aisle seats, again, to push people up to the far edges of the bus and again, try to keep that distance as much as we as much as we can. We, again, funding is going to be tight. We know that. We've already seen some tremendous losses in our ridership revenue. So we, through all of our process, we have brought as much things as we can in-house, including some construction, and we're self-performing that. Does two things. One, it helps save money, but two, it allows us to keep as many people employed as possible. And then last, what we're doing is really we tightened our belt, reducing or eliminating any expense that wasn't deemed critical. Bottom line is, we're trying to not only get ourselves through 2020, but really set ourselves up to get through 2021. I believe we have been able to do that. We're the lucky ones. I'll tell you that. There are other transit systems across the country that that right now are facing some real hard financial times, including here locally with Metro Transit, where they talk about a fiscal cliff that's coming. We have been able to, again, kind of set ourselves up. So as long as we can get through this thing by the end of 2021, I think we're in pretty good shape. Now, COVID-19 isn't the only threat, unfortunately, that we're having to deal with these days. Every once in a while, even though we've been around for 34 years, 35 years, there's always a push to potentially bring all transit in under one roof and eliminate suburban transit providers. And I'm not here to sound the alarm just yet, but I am making the rounds, letting everybody know that there are some potential threats on the horizon. One is, right now, there is a blue committee, a Blue Ribbon Committee, that was formed by the governor to look at transit and the transit structure here in the metropolitan area. We have some real concerns about the makeup of that group and our ability, really, to defend the job that we have done. We think that not only Southwest Transit, but the suburban communities were formed because, A, we were not getting any service for the dollars that we are putting in, and we have more than delivered that on the service. We've done a number of things that really kind of set us apart. Some of those things were, and I'll just use Southwest as an example, innovation. We are known as kind of the innovator here in this region, first to bring transit-oriented development, which we did up in Eden Prairie, first to bring coach vehicles, first to bring micro-transit. In fact, micro-transit is our prime service. When we started prime, the industry hadn't even labeled it yet. Now they call it micro-transit. We are saying it's the public transit version of Uber and Lyft. We've put Wi-Fi on all of our buses, transit, first transit app. So you can see, technology has been a big thing for our overall organization. For 10 years running, we've had a customer satisfaction rating of 97% of satisfied to very satisfied, with the majority of them being in that very satisfied number there. And this isn't just a small sampling. This is over 90% of our riders that we we survey them on their trip going into or out of downtown. So it is a very good representation of how people feel about the services that we do provide. We have a strong commitment to bring people out to our job sites, and we have one of the oldest reverse commute services operating here in the region. And we are really, as I mentioned, kind of the region's incubator in terms of trying out new things. Because of our flexibility, because of our size, we're able to do that. We're very cost-effective. We do contract out for our drivers, so they're actually not Southwest employees. They're the only portion of our operation that is not. But by doing that and keeping our administrative staff small, we are very cost-effective in what we do. So the other big thing, I think, is we are very close to the customers, to the communities that we serve, and because of that, we're able to deliver the services you want. So on a positive note, because, again, these are the things that we have to deal with, we are dealing with. But I always want to end it with a glimmer of hope. We're not just sitting back, not doing anything right now. We are looking at at how we pivot into into the next, you know, 10 years. Our prime service, our micro-transit service, has been very successful. We just started ruling out a service that's related to it. We call it Prime MD. That service was just starting to get off the ground when COVID hit. The difference for Prime and Prime MD is Prime MD, we allow you to book your ride in advance to a medical facility. That is because there was a lot of people that had had a lot of worry that would that would that bus come and pick me up on the day of my medical appointment? I needed to get there by a certain time. How it differs from even something like a metro mobility is, when you're done with that appointment, then you you use the app or you make the phone call, and we're there to pick you up within 30 minutes. Now, we've all been to the doctor's office where you have a set appointment, let's say 2:00, and you're not even seen, and it's now 3:00. What happened with metro mobility, or it still happens, is that that return ride had already been scheduled, and if you missed that ride, now everybody's scrambling to try to find a way to get you home. This kind of solves that problem. We also go out of our service area. So we'll goes out to Oconia, we go over to Shakopee, we go to Weidana, we're hitting all the major medical facilities in our area. We're also looking at, not looking at, we are planning to implement service across the 494 corridor after the first of the year. This will provide service to the airport and Mall of America. It's going to operate much in the way our prime service does. We have some set times that will be going in each direction, but it'll be plentiful, and it will open up a whole new corridor for us. Besides going to the medical facilities in Shakopee, we're working out partnerships with Minnesota Valley, and we're going to expand into that area. We have a number of people that come from the Shakopee area to job sites in Chaska and vice versa. So that's going to help on that front. And then we're looking to expand potentially down the road into some other communities. We're changing the way we're delivering service. We're now looking at electric vehicles. In the past, those vehicles didn't fit our mode of operation very well. If it was a hybrid, it's really, that's all recharged by the amount of braking you do. And on express services, you don't do a lot of braking, at least we hope not. But now some of the electric vehicles are coming out and have a range in excess of 200 miles. And now that kind of fits the model that we're looking at. Autonomous vehicles is something else we're looking into. In fact, we were very close here recently at securing a federal, big federal grant demonstration project, but we're still on the radar for MINDOT and the state's demonstration project in the Eden Prairie area, tying in when light rail comes aboard here in 2023. And speaking of that, our Southwest Station Mobility Hub will also be something we roll out once rail here comes here, and that's really to provide better access to all the job locations throughout our service area. So as you can see, we have a number of things that we do have on the horizon, and we look forward to delivering here sometime in the near future. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know Bob had a couple of words he wanted to say, and we'll go from there.
Well.
I'm sorry.
Do we want to go with Bob first, or questions from council? Go ahead, Bob. You're up. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll be brief here. But mayor and council members, I'm sure Councilmember Wong has kept you all in the loop as some of this has evolved over time. But I think the main message from my perspective would be that it is a real challenging time, as Len described, and not just because of the virus, but because of the threat that I think exists relative to consolidating suburban transit, you know, under one governance structure for covering regional transit. And, you know, if we went back to the middle 80s, I mean, we were paying in property tax dollars to support regional transit, and we were receiving one bus a day. And it took a lot of effort by a number of communities working together to get special legislation passed that supported opt-outs, as we're called back then, but to establish suburban transit systems. I think as long as we were able to use our property taxes, you know, we functioned pretty well and grew and had success, and Len can tie and has talked about some of those successes. In 2002, I think that began to change with an investment and redefinition of how dollars were being allocated to support our suburban transit systems. And from my perspective, it feels pretty similar in terms of the challenge and having to kind of step up to the challenge that's questioning what we're doing and why we're doing that most every turn, and to the point where it's tough to feel like a real part of the regional transit system. We are, I think there's over a million rides a year that are provided. Len would have the absolute accurate number there, but it's been, as he's outlined, a very successful system. It's almost like a utility because of the reliance of people to get back and forth to work and all that's different right now, but hopefully that comes back. But, you know, it's community orientation, the ability to move people in and around the community. You know, it's such a success that way. And now it feels that, you know, there's, you know, we have to watch closely the elections and the Blue Ribbon Panel recommendations. But I think more than anything, my message would be, it's kind of a call to readiness, you know, to be on notice and, you know, to be ready to engage. And, you know, it's all hands on deck to engage. And if the recommendation is to say that suburban transit isn't going to be what we've known it to be after we opted out, I think that's something that is going to require a consolidated, coordinated effort among leadership across, you know, certainly our communities and all of the communities that make up suburban transit. So I think it's one to watch really closely. And I think the threat is real. And I think that's, you know, I just wanted to share those thoughts with you. So thanks.
Okay. Thanks, Bob. Appreciate it. Questions from Len or Bob? Anyone on council?
All right. Is it time for questions? Is that what you said, Mayor?
Yeah, can you hear me? Sorry.
Oh, yeah, it just cut out a little bit. I guess that I'm so grateful for the leadership with Southwest Transit. I think that pivoting in a pandemic is not easy to do for any business, but especially a business that has such a concrete way of doing business. So I'm really impressed with everything we just saw. And I am grateful Councilmember Wong has done an awesome job at keeping us updated. I guess my question is, I mean, and I don't know who best can answer this, but maybe it's Mr. Repke, I'm not sure, and you kind of did. But is there anything concrete we can do now to be proactive? Because when I see a black and green bus, I'm like, that's part of my community. I get really excited. I just saw a prime one today, and I was like, so glad we have that. And, you know, Councilman Wong, you've done an awesome job of keeping it at the forefront of our minds. We talk about it a lot, which I'm so grateful for, because I honestly wouldn't even know about it if you didn't and we didn't have these presentations. So but I don't, is there anything concrete we can do to be proactive, I guess?
There's one real concrete thing that we should do, and I think we should do it pretty soon, is have Deb Barber, our Met Council representative, come to the council and make a presentation on what the Blue Ribbon Committee is intent is, and to be able to share our concern about what we think it might be. You know, Deb has been a great regional rep as far as being able to be very accessible and willing to sit down and talk with us. And, you know, she's heard from us before about our concern with, you know, with Metro Transit and the potential threats it has to suburban transit. And I just think, you know, at the end of the day, she's the one representing us on that on that board. And I just think it would be really in our best interest to try to have her come as soon as possible to to have her explain from her perspective what the Blue Ribbon Panel is, and again, share with her what our concerns are. I know we had Len and Bob present to the Rotary. Is that just last week? It seems like a while ago, last week. But one of the things that we talked about coming out of that is actually having Deb come to the Rotary meeting, too. And we actually have an inside connection here with with Dan's wife works with Deb in their business. But, you know, even from the Rotary's perspective, where we have a lot of businesspeople in the community, to be able to express concerns that we have about what a, you know, tremendous asset this bus service is to our community, and, you know, how major changes could really negatively impact that. So that's that would be a suggestion I would make.
All the things that why Southwest Transit is good is great. For me, what hits home in some a lot of ways is things that it allows us to do that, if it's under a bigger umbrella, it ain't happening, in my opinion. And the example that comes to mind is the state championship football game, right? If that's under Metro Transit, that ain't, they aren't setting up a special bus to bring Chaska residents to that game. They're just not. It's not in their interest. It's probably, you know, they're going to look at the financials and say, doesn't make sense. So you look at all the things that was outlined as positive in how it's good for the community. I mean, that one sticks up to me, because that was immensely successful with people getting there and everything like that. And that goes away. Like, there's just, it would not, you know, maybe they would, but I doubt it. I just think that those are the things that having the connection to the community and having a part of the community rallies support behind, because that doesn't happen last year if it's, in my opinion, under Metro Transit versus Southwest.
Yeah, I'll echo kind of the thoughts of just being able to provide more coverage in our community. I mean, I think I've shared this before. I think, Len, when you were here last year. When I was young, I went to a private school that was within the range, technically, that didn't provide busing. And but it was, you know, I had to go, you know, down 101, which didn't have a sidewalk at the time. And I had to go, you know, cross the lake and, you know, whatever. Anyways, it just, it was, it wasn't something that was feasible. And so, yeah, at the time, it wasn't called prime, but it was called Dalaride. And, you know, being able to have that service, not only for myself as a young student, but also other kids in other surrounding neighborhoods provided transportation to and from school that wouldn't have otherwise been provided. I think about that, and I think about being able to provide those resources, just in that, you know, story, but also, like you talked about with the football game. And I guess I don't have any hard-hitting questions other than, you know, I see, you know, you're looking into kind of the future and seeing work, you know, people in the workplace, you know, some people, some companies, you know, they're not, they're not going back into the office, that this might be a permanent thing, working from home. And so that's going to change. I like seeing that your vision is beyond just getting back to the way things were prior to this pandemic, that you're looking into. Looks like maybe a more competitive option to like a Uber or a taxi of some sort with with the smaller electric vehicles, it looks like possibly. That's great. That's innovative. That's kind of looking forward and kind of seeing past, you know, even though, you know, things will eventually go back, you know, it may not look the same, but that's a solution. So I guess my question would just have been along the lines of Councilmember Hatfield's in the sense of, you know, what can we do to advocate for you? So.
Great. Well, thank you all for the wonderful comments. The only thing I would add to Matt's, because I think it is very important, he's spot on with letting your feelings known to the Metropolitan Council Representative Deb Barber, would be, don't forget our legislative delegation. We will have a new state senator. We have great support from people like Greg Bow, who sat on our commission for a number of years. But ultimately, decisions will be in their hands, and they need, again, sometimes if they don't hear much, they're not thinking as much about us, and we do need them to pay attention to us as we go into this session.
This is Bob. Again, if I could just one more comment, and I really resonate with John's comment, that Councilmember Gra's comment relative to kind of setting the priorities and setting the goals for the system. Because Southwest Transit has had
Because Southwest Transit has had a real focus and priority on community, engaging in the community, connecting to the community, the whole community service. So John, I think that was spot on. I think once it's consolidated, that ability to set the priorities kind of now you're in a battle to, because there's there's a whole nest of of priorities and goals that are being tossed out there. And so I think that's a real concern because Southwest has really had that as a major priority. So I think that is, you know, I really support your words there.
So I'll just add something to this, which is that, you know, the one of the big challenges isn't just our existence, because even assuming we're successful and maintaining Southwest Transit throughout this, you know, throughout this period. We still have been fighting an ongoing battle for funding and that's something that has been for years, it's been slowly decreasing and decreasing and it's been very variable and, you know, Len can certainly speak to that too. And it's one of those things that this is going to be something that we need to make sure that we're very clear in our intent, that we need to make sure that the the tax dollars contributing come back to us to support transit that directly impacts our residents, our communities. And that we can support the transportation that impacts, you know, all of our residents, not just the ones who commute downtown, but who, you know, may need a ride to, you know, medical facility or just to go shopping or who just don't have trouble, you know, with mobility. Those are services that, you know, aren't, you know, provided well with, you know, without with other services that come from other parts of, you know, like Metro Transit, for example. But making sure that we're serving our community as best as possible to our community values and what we need within this region. And so it's not just about this, but this is what we're facing today and it's important that we have united, that we're united in the way that we approach this. So I think it's supporting of, you know, it's bringing Representative Barber to the to their council, inviting her and I just talked to her today. But and, you know, also making sure that we're, you know, sharing our, sharing our position with with other elective representatives. Because I think this is really, really a very critical turning point. The Blue Ribbon Commission's final report is due the end of December. So we have very little time to act. So we need to be very decisive in what our position is.
Council or the budget is set by the Met Council. Am I correct?
Some of the funding, you know, I'll let Len speak to that, but it's like some of our funding is, some of it's legislatively driven. Len, do you want to add on to that?
Yeah. So Bob alluded to it early on, when the, when the agency was formed, it was really the transit tax on your, on your property tax that funded our organization. And that was a good fit because as our area grew, both in terms of population, you know, households as well as businesses, the dollars were generated to provide those services. Two thousand and two, that formula changed and we went to get a portion of the motor vehicle sales tax. Now, there was a snapshot in time taken in two thousand and two, and those for the most part are the same dollars, percentage dollars that we receive today. So the growth and the money to allow that growth really hasn't kept up with the the demands of our area or the demands of our sister organizations like Minnesota Valley Transit. Legislatively in statute, we do get a portion of funding, but again, that is, that's, that's funding that's really based on two thousand and two. So anything over and above are those type of things that we negotiate out through the Met Council.
I don't want to call anyone out, I guess, on this, but in the past, there have been a few issues where I mistakenly assumed that just because cities were our neighbors, they had some of the same priorities as we did. And I'm just wondering, do we, is, I mean, is there any influence we need to provide with our, like Eden Prairie or Chan Hassan, Carver, Victoria, to kind of say, we really care about this. We think you should too. And maybe they are just, they care as much as we do. So I could be mistaken, but I don't want to assume that, I guess.
I I would say that the the same feelings are felt by the three founding cities. I met this morning with Mayor Ryan. I've met with Mayor Case. I'll be presenting to their councils here shortly as well. Carver's always had strong support for us. Victoria, while they're not, you know, we do provide prime service to them under contract, but they also have been very supportive. So I do feel it is felt by all the cities that that receive our services, feel strongly about what we do provide.
That's awesome. That's great to hear. Thank you.
Giving the, or given the timing that Councilmember Wong talked about, you know, I'm going to try to see if Deb can actually come to our November second meeting. Because I do think the sooner that we can talk to her about it, the better. Then I would suggest after the elections and then we get whoever's in the representative and senator positions to come in, not just about this issue, but others, but this will be, this will be one that, you know, that we can focus on.
You know, and Len, this, we haven't really had a chance to talk about this, but, you know, if if it would help to, you know, have the resolutions from our city or the founding cities or the member cities. You know, I think, you know, we should, you know, kind of talk about what our strategy is, not just as a Chaska, but amongst the other communities as well in terms of what message is is helpful to protecting the, you know, the assets and services that benefit our communities.
Yeah, I agree. We did, and thank you much. Last year you did provide us with that resolution of support, as did our other cities, but it's something we may want to update.
All right. Anything else? I mean, I I would just echo a lot of the words that have been said about what what Southwest Transit means to the community of Chaska. I mean, that's our only mode of public transportation that we have. And the things that they provided to us as a community, there's, I mean, you, we've touched on a few of the Vikings, the football game and stuff like that. But you look at how they went out of their way for the Ryder Cup, the
Arboretum yesterday or last year.
Yep, the Arboretum trips, but there's something else I'm trying to think of that that they helped us out on. The the nineteenth hole, they they moved people around for us. They've offered to use their parking shelter a number of different times. I mean, so the things that they've done for us have just been really, really far reaching and so important to the community because it's the things that if we didn't have that would change a lot about what how we'd be viewed as a community and how we could do things that we currently do that we wouldn't otherwise be able to do. So I I think Len pretty much knows how I feel about how important the the transit system is. And I mean, we've we've had meetings with, you know, Charlie Zelli, the new chair. And we've been pretty vocal to him about the issues and and the things at hand. And surprisingly, he was really open to listen that night. I was, I was surprised. But so Southwest is is an important piece of of Chaska. One, one question that I've kind of had and I've been thinking a lot about it is, has there been talk about what what this pandemic is going to do as far as just bus traffic to downtown with the lack of anybody going back or that many, I shouldn't say anybody, that many going back that will have offices again downtown? I I mean, I don't know what that means to everyone. And I was just curious if there's been, Len, as have you guys as operators had those, any kind of those kind of, I'm sure there's been some sort of a conversation, but I certainly haven't heard anything about it if there, if it's going on.
Yeah, Mayor, we've had quite a few discussions with, you know, like the downtown council and with some of the major businesses that we provide services for. It it runs in a couple camps. One, you have a very optimistic camp that things are going to come back once a vaccine is is available. I don't think we share in that optimism quite to that extent, just seeing what has transpired. I think I think it's all going to be different. I I do think eventually people are going to go back to work downtown, but they may not be working five days a week. You may be going in, you know, two or three days a week. You're going to have some companies that have already opted to relocate out of downtown for all sorts of different reasons. So I don't, I don't expect it to change, at least not, not, not quickly. Maybe eventually over time it will, but during that time, that's why we're looking at other opportunities. Because again, if we just wait for that old model to come back, we might be waiting a long time.
Because that would be, you know, my thinking is, is now all of a sudden you're going to have people from maybe the cities being transported out here for jobs because of business shifts. And that's what I was wondering. You know, you know, because as I sit on TAB, we still look at doing that. And that's a question I want to start asking there is, is what happens if 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 it switches and the market goes the other way around and you're going to Minneapolis to bring people out here? What happens then? I mean, how how does that change our whole lifestyle or your lifestyle more so?
And that that's one of the reasons why we're putting a lot of eggs in that prime basket, because not only will people go to jobs in a suburban market, there are going to be more people moving into a suburban market and you need that flexibility to serve it. Something that you may not get on a fixed route with rails, not to take my shot at light rail, but nonetheless, I I just did. You need to be flexible.
I'm surprised it took you this long.
I know. I waited.
I'm thinking, boy, is he mellowing out? What's going on here? I was expecting that right out of the gate.
No, I've mellowed. I've mellowed.
Well, that's good. You took the shot. Now I don't have to. Because I'm still, I'm not convinced of it, but that's, what do I know? But, well, I, I, you know, again, those are things that I think Matt's a good suggestion. Let's get Deb in. I know we've talked about it. But this pandemic's just making, made everything so challenging and you know, about the time we want to do that, we got something else that comes up. And so, but I think it's good that we get it on there and get it in and and start having those conversations. Quickly, I'm I'm hoping that we are, we're going to hear some results of this Blue Ribbon Community. I I have a meeting Wednesday to see if, I mean, they've talked about it a little bit, but not at any great length. So I'm wait and see what we hear this week about it. So.
And and we do have some friends on that committee. They're not all geared up against us. It's just when you look at the 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 vast numbers that are are not really suburban transit supporters. It it does have us concerned.
Just, yeah, I mean, I, oh, go ahead, Bob.
Just a quick anecdote in that discussion. Suburban Transit has five minutes to present its story to the Blue Ribbon Panel.
And when when will that be taking place?
I think the interesting time is to tell our story and express our concerns. Five minutes is what's allotted.
And that will be on Monday, Mark.
Oh, this week? Yeah. Oh, okay. Oh, all right. Okay.
That's that's a pretty compressed timeframe. So.
Have to take the strategy like we do at visitor presentation. We say this is only five minutes, but you'll have to stretch it out to forty five.
We talked about this, but what Bob said is that's five minutes for STA, which represents MVTA, Southwest Transit, Plymouth and Maple Grove together are five minutes. It's not five minutes each. So that's all doubts on regional transit. That's, that's the, you know, read between the lines and tell me what you said about that message, right?
Right. I mean, I had not, I, that's, that's interesting. I had not heard that. I I I was under the assumption, what you just said, that it was five minutes, which isn't very long per service. And now you're saying it's all.
Total.
No, it's everything.
So does that mean the Met Council then gets five minutes too?
No, they're kind of running the show. They've already had their their full meetings to talk about Metro Transit, Metro Mobility, Light Rail and BRT. So they've they've had their their say.
You know, the key part of the discussion is that, I mean, there's a lot of priority in the core cities with Metro Transit. And the challenges and the issues that they're facing. But if we really have a regional planning body and there is really a commitment to regional transit, suburban transit makes up and is going to be a growing portion of that transit system. And it's not going to be immune from having some of the same challenges that core cities are facing. It's been hard to get that message through. It seems like, you know, and from a funding standpoint that somebody pointed out earlier to to be able to fight for our fair share. So it's, the feeling is, I think it's are we a part? The key question is, are we a part or are we not a part of the regional transit planning system? I would hope so, but actions speak louder than words. So I guess find out.
I'll add on to what Bob said here because I was, I was invited to participate in the Met Council's Regional Transit Values Study, where they would look at, where they were trying to use, trying to get feedback in terms of where transit should be directed, where transit funding and resources should be directed. When you actually look at the core values in terms of that were being evaluated, the core values or core criteria for evaluation, transit values were things like density of jobs, density of low income individuals, density of of travelers who were dependent on travel and had no other mechanism for travel. And, you know, factors like that, that if you actually look at it and map them out, almost all of them were in the core cities of Minneapolis or St. Paul. And almost, in fact, there were none of the values there were things that were favorable to suburban transit at all. So in terms of suburban, you know, we were included on the map, but, you know, they're very areas of very light in color compared to the the core metropolitan areas. So I asked them, well, what about, you know, things like, you know, traffic mitigation or pollution mitigation or, you know, bringing riders downtown? It's like, well, this, well, we'll have to include that in a future study. Well, that's great, but the future study isn't planned. There's no future study planned. And, you know, the what the transit values output is going to be probably brought into this Blue Ribbon Commission. And and under, there's like, you know, looking at that from that objective perspective, even as a suburban resident, there's no way I could see how any of those things are favorable to suburban transit. I mean, just objectively, and I'm sure I can share parts of the presentation. I got copies of things interested, but it was very way towards the metropolitan cities. Yeah. And that's, and that's the deck we're kind of playing with right now.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Well, I I want to say thank you, Len and Bob, for coming forward and helping bring the issues up front and for for all to hear. So greatly appreciated. And well, Matt, you'll let them know when we're going to have Deb available just for to have her at our meeting, I assume?
I got on the calendar to reach out tomorrow.
Okay, perfect. Perfect. All right. Any burning words, Leonard or Bob?
No, just just thank you all for for your continued support and we really do appreciate it.
All right. Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Appreciate it.
Have a good night, guys.
Yeah, you too. Take care.
All right. And all right. So we'll move on with me not there. Is there anyone else in the audience for visitor presentation? Or Mike, is there anybody on Zoom? I'm not sure what Mike said.
Yeah, Mayor, there's, there's nobody on Zoom.
Okay. And there's, and there's nobody in the audience?
They're, they're, they're the, in the action item.
Yeah, not for visitor presentation.
Okay, but nobody under visitor presentation? Am I hearing correct?
I'm not in the room, but there's no one on Zoom. So.
All right. Okay. Well, then I'm going to move on. Next is item six, approving previous meeting minutes. Again, if there are no corrections or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve the October fifth council meeting minutes. Motion by Councilmember Gra. Motion by Councilmember Gra. I'm sorry, I cut you off. Who?
Hatfield.
Sorry, I was talking when you were. All right. Motion in the second, Gra, Hatfield, discussion. Hearing none. Councilmember Wong? Councilmember Hubbard?
Hi.
Councilmember Gra? Councilmember Gra.
Hi.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Woodshill, I pass this five oh. All right. Moves us on to item uh, seven consent items. Again, these are items that, um, are, um, um, needing approval, but not necessarily a conversation. But anything can be pulled out and have a conversation regarding, um, any one of the items. So with that, I'll leave it. Uh, anyone have any, uh, thing they want to bring up?
I just have a quick question on seven E with the Lake Grace Trail. It's just sort of like a request for bids, right? They don't have any like design or anything along those lines.
Well, yes, we, we do have the design of what would happen. Um, I don't know. Brian, if you want to just talk real quick about, uh, uh, sort of the plan for Lake Grace Trail.
Hey, Mayor and Council. Um, Blake Grace Trail. Um, so the proposal um, last year really was to go in, design, uh, the typical standard nine to 10 foot trail, um, with the, with the bridge to, you know, so people can have that safe crossing underneath the highway 41. Once we went and looked out at the bidding climate, it was pretty clear that it's a very, very difficult trail. And a lot of specialty work needed to be done. So we were charged with taking a different look at, at the trail itself. And, um, yeah, how can we make it work? So not, right now we're proposing to, um, put the bridge in, um, across. Well, as you cross underneath 41, there'd be a bridge crossing over the lake. Then it would tie into, um, the existing trail. And basically tie into the city's trail system. So there'd be, um, fairly minimal tree removal. There is however, one very, very large, um, cottonwood that's actually growing in the trail. That is really one of the problems. Um, the homeowners, the adjacent homeowners really want it out. If you've seen the size of this thing, it's immense, but it's really served its, really served its purpose. And you know, tonight I think we're just asking for the consideration of council to give us the direction to, uh, move forward with getting the bids to, you know, potentially look at the, um, the bridge itself and then kind of the tree work. A lot of the work that, uh, the final, final work that will take place was really, it's going to be performed by city staff self-performing. Um, we would pave the trail back in, kind of in, really in its, in its existing place.
Thing to mention with it, uh, these guys did have a neighborhood meeting a couple of weeks ago, uh, with the neighborhood. And you know, one of the challenges there is that the, there's very little room between the lake and the, the homes there. And so residents were actually pleased that we are coming back with the recommendation for a six foot trail as opposed to an eight foot trail through there. Um, makes it a little bit more difficult for us to maintain because our equipment is eight foot wide. But I know Brian's been looking into potentially having, uh, uh, Jonathan Association, because they have equipment that actually fits that, uh, trail section to be able to maintain in the winter. Um, but this, this allows us to get that trail connection done, get the bridge over the inlet and get that open so that people can use that. And, and do it in, in a manner that we think, um, you know, before we had looked at a plan that would put in a retaining wall system that would have allowed for an eight foot wide trail, but it would have, uh, would have cost a half a million dollars more, uh, to put that in, which we just didn't see as being economically feasible just to go from six foot to eight foot wide for the trail. So Park Board saw this too, and they, they thought it was the right direction to go to.
Well, and, and the whole thing is about this, this section of the trail. If, if we don't do something, we just put a pretty expensive underpass in for nothing. And so we, we really need to move forward and I, I, I'm happy to hear that the residents have been really, uh, supportive of this. And I heard that that trail is very, very challenging, but, uh, we have to make this connection. It's, it's so important to have this piece connect. And I don't know what it's like once it gets off that steep slope about exactly where that trail goes. But I'm, I'm glad that we are moving forward and that, that, uh, um, Brian, you're, you and your crews can, can do a fair amount of that work. And, and I know that that tree is, um, apparently quite a, is going to be quite an issue, but we'll have to, uh, you know, it is what it is. And, um, you know, we've worked around big trees before and somehow they seem to go away. Um, but, uh,
Mayor?
Yeah.
Um, Sherry DeBoer, I believe is how you pronounce your last name, has her hand raised? If you are willing to allow public comment.
Um, yeah, you know what? We can just give us, I'll, I'll call on her when, when we're ready.
Okay. Sound good.
Um, but, uh, from what I've heard, the meeting went pretty well, Brian. Is that correct? With residents? Okay. All right.
Overall, the, the public meeting went, uh, went very well. Um, we were able to answer quite a few questions from, you know, all the area residents and but, um, seemed to, seemed to have pretty good buy-in.
That's good. Like I say, I'm sure that they understand and, and they'd probably love to see that connection as well, you know? It's always disruptive when you make a new connection like that, but in the long run, it seems like it's kind of like our downtown street reconstruction. It was a pain and a headache, but now when you see the, the benefits of what happens after the fact, everyone, you know, now we got people, one's at our turn. So, um, I, I just think that this trail, why to some it might be an inconvenience. I think in the long run, we'll find out that it's a, it'll be quite a convenience and a, quite a, a value to the community. Um, all right. Anybody else on council before I call on, on, uh, was it Shirley? Kevin?
Uh, Sherry.
Sherry. All right, Sherry, go ahead.
You're on mute.
Sherry, you're muted. I can mute you here in a second. All right, Sherry, you should be outside.
Thank you, Mayor, very much for this opportunity. I'm on the board of directors for Eastlake, um, Association. And we just wanted to thank the city, uh, for really understanding the concerns, especially of those homeowners that would, um, really be impacted really negatively if there would have been a wall built. But we're very glad to know about that. And we just wanted to listen tonight to just let you know that we're here, um, and willing to work with you if you need access for your equipment at any time. And I'm the person on the board that's a liaison for this project. So anyway, thank you for, uh, understanding our part of the issues for the trail expansion. We're very glad you're keeping it, uh, to the lower cost.
All right. Well, thank you. Brian, I assume you have our contact?
Yeah. Right. Yes. And huge kudos to, to Brian and to, to Scott and Marshall. I mean, that, uh, uh, I, I think they did a fantastic job going through this process. And I think the intent would be as if the bids come in good is that we do this work over the winter, finish it up next spring. Um, so it's next summer, people would be able to actually use it.
Awesome. All right. Anyone else from, uh, council regarding, um, seventy? I'm hearing quiet, so I'm going to assume that everyone is good. Was there anything else under consent that needed, uh, a conversation? If not, I've entertained a motion to, uh, approve consent.
A move by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second.
Okay. So I have a motion by Councilmember Hubbard, second by Councilmember Wong to, uh, approve consent discussion. Hearing none. Uh, Councilmember Hubbard.
Hi.
Councilmember Gra.
Yes.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Councilmember Wong.
Hi.
Mayor Woodshill, yes. Passes five oh. All right. Moves us to item eight, which is, uh, adopt resolution 2020 dash 83, public assessment hearing. Adopt resolution approving the imposition of service charges for the 2021 Chaska Downtown Special Services District.
Mayor, council, the item in front of you tonight is actually something that, uh, comes in front of you every year at this time. Uh, is when we have to, uh, reconsider establishing the assessments for the downtown special services district. Nate will be going through presenting this item, and then we do have, uh, representatives from the downtown, uh, special services district downtown business line. So, uh, are here to, uh, speak on behalf of it too. So I'll turn over to Nate.
Thanks, Matt. Mayor and council members, uh, this is an item that comes in front of you, uh, annually since the special service district in downtown was created in 2014. Just want to remind you that this is an assessment that goes against the properties that are downtown, um, within the district as it's described and as it's outlined in the map, um, in the attached document that outlines the budget from the operation plan for 2021. Uh, the city creates the SSD, the council needs to approve the budget and the assessment every year. Uh, but we do contract with the downtown business alliance, uh, to administer the SSD. So that's just want you to understand the role of how that all plays out, um, and really what we're asking for here tonight. So what's being proposed, uh, for the 2021 budget and operating plan by the downtown business alliance? Is to basically continue with the budget, um, that they have for the last previous, uh, few years. Um, they propose a flat budget, which would be $58,100. Um, and in the operation plan, they do detail, uh, the general categories of marketing and promotion, promotional events, district operations and communications, administration and business recruitment and retention. Um, with each of those, uh, having dollar amounts assigned to them in the total of $58,100. Uh, as proposed, the service charge rate would be $1.03 per $1,000 in estimated market value, which is a 1% decrease over last year. And this is because values have gone up slightly in downtown, uh, as compared to 2020 budget year. Um, and so you see that slight decrease. Uh, that would be applied to each of the, the businesses. Um, we do have, uh, Dan Keport, who's the president of the downtown business alliance and SSD board. And we have Jen Angel, who's the administrator of the SSD here. Um, and they can talk in more detail about some of their accomplishments and plans, uh, accomplishments for 2020 and plans for 2021. Um, but I do want to just outline to you all that staff would recommend uh, approval of the budget and the operation plan as it is proposed, um, in tonight's, uh, council packet. So with that, Dan and or Jen, if you have anything that you would like to offer up to the council, um, invite you to do so.
Okay. Well, thank you. Um, glad to be here. Um, I'm Dan Keport. I'm the president of the downtown business alliance and Jen Angel is our administrator. So, uh, I, um, have given this presentation a number of years in a row and I'm, you're all familiar. So I'm, I'm not going to spend any time today going back the history and how we got here and what led to the development of this entity. But, uh, the Chaska Downtown Business, uh, Alliance is a 501(c)(6) nonprofit corporation, um, staffed entirely by volunteers. Um, and, uh, the biggest thing we spend our time doing is, um, administering the special services district, which is the source of funds from the people downtown, the businesses and the property owners downtown that have agreed to be taxed in order to develop funds for making downtown a better place to do business and ultimately to increase the value of, of the businesses and the properties downtown. I did want to take a couple of minutes though, and just talk about our mission because the, uh, four bullet points on our mission correspond precisely to the budget buckets that we have. And those budget dollars are the same this year as they've been last year. Um, and pretty close to what they've been the years preceding that. Um, the four areas are marketing and promotions, uh, producing and promoting, promoting local events, um, creating opportunities for businesses to communicate with each other and with the city and, and both directions there. And creating, um, a thriving business district by supporting, supporting various programs with the county and the EDA and the chamber and, and the city on, um, things like the sign grant program and so on. So, um, so those are the four, four areas where we're, we, where we spend money. Uh, the marketing and promoting of local businesses, we've really developed quite a, a, a far reaching and effective, uh, social media presence. And that's a big part of where the marketing and promotion dollars go. As well as creating content that engage the citizens of Chaska and visitors to Chaska, uh, with the businesses and the unique character of our downtown. So, um, a lot of those marketing dollars and promotion dollars though, are in support of events. And, and as you know, events have kind of disappeared, evaporated this year. Um, this has been a tough year for, for businesses in Chaska. As I'm sure you know, I mean, we heard from the Southwest Transit today, what the challenge they've faced. You guys know what challenges you face with this facility, with the community center. You know, you, you look at Inchasca, the golf course and the banks and the liquor stores, they're probably doing okay for the most part. But you look at a restaurant, they have a real tough road to hoe. Uh, photographers, other people in event businesses, there, there are some businesses that are really struggling in Chaska. And, um, so, you know, we, we take our obligation to support and try to promote these businesses very seriously. Um, so when events kind of dried up, you know, a lot of our, our budget went to, you know, to bring a horse drawn sleigh for the hometown holiday event. Well, we don't have to spend that money this year because we're not doing that event. Um, so some of those kinds of dollars, we, we got together and scratched our heads and said, well, what do we do? I mean, what, how can we help these businesses? So we've really done a pivot here from events that are gathering, uh, events for people to come together to spending that money on things that will draw people into downtown. So attractions more than events. And so you will see some things coming up this winter where I think our biggest challenges are going to be going forward when people can't be outside as much. Things like, um, lighting, reusable fixtures. We'll have a Santa where kids can come and get their, you know, a plastic figure where they can get a picture taken at, at City Square Park with the, with the big blow up Santa. Um, ice sculptures, uh, painting the sides of buildings for photo opportunities and for Instagram. All those kinds of things I think will draw people into Chaska, which will support the businesses. At the same time, allowing people to be safe, not have the crowds gathering, um, and, and being able to keep their distance and, and, uh, still be a benefit to the businesses downtown. So we're redirecting, uh, some of those funds in, in that type of way. And, and we're still figuring some of that out and, and, and moving forward with that. So, um, yeah, creating opportunities for business and property owners to communicate with each other as well as downtown. I've always said, I think that's the most important thing that we do. Uh, and, and we really value the relationship we've had with city staff, with, with Nate and Matt and Marshall Grange and the communication staff and, and our relationship with the Chamber of Commerce, which is another entity that's struggling, I'll tell you. And, and with the council. I mean, I think the, the support we've had from the council and the lines of communication have stayed open. We have Michaela come to our meetings. That's terrific. I mean, that's, that's one of the things that makes Chaska strong. And, uh, and we want to keep that going. So, um, and then supporting other programs like the sign grant program. I think we just put $10,000 into the sign program. You know, let's have better signs, make it cuter downtown, make it, um, make it pop and keep people engaged. And that helps the businesses too. They don't have to spend all the money that they would on something like that otherwise. So, um, we're also, uh, you know, I think when things have been turned upside down, it's a great time to do a strategic reassessment. And that's part of our plan moving forward here too, in the fourth quarters. Um, we're trying to schedule some time with, um, Richard Firstman of Hugh Life. And I think the city council has worked with this gentleman in the past and his organization. And, uh, try to kind of step back and say, all right, let's do a reassessment. And are we on the right path? And are we doing the, the right things? And we're making the best possible use of the money that we've asked people to put in, uh, to promote to downtown. So that's, um, that's kind of our plan this year at a high level. I guess I'd like to open it up to questions if, if people have any areas of concern or questions.
So, you know, I know that this is like a, you know, a tax, obviously, and, and all the businesses that are in that, um, perimeter are in, right? But the chamber is like an opt-in pay and dues sort of thing. And they're obviously, they're 501(c)(6) as well. I know that your 501(c)(6)'s were hit the hardest when it came to, they weren't applicable for the carry dollars and things along those lines, right? PPP. PPP, the relationship with the chamber, I know that they're struggling. How is that partnership been going for you this year with them?
Actually, very good. I think our relationship with the chamber has been very strong. I don't know, Jen, if you want to add in.
First time I've been out of the house since March and it's a little dry in this mess. I don't know how it didn't do well at school. I think what we found is that we really had to rely on each other in going through this. And, you know, the partnership that Dan mentioned with the city and even the CDA this year, which was a new partner for us. It was all that kind of give and take. Who's got information? How can we push this out there? Who's creating the social media post? How do I share it? And I think that's really the way that I look at how our relationship with the chamber has evolved this year. It's less about events. I mean, the farmer's market did happen and that's a great thing for us downtown. But it was more about how do we share information? How do you give stuff to your people that we put together and how do we do the same? The more people know, I think when we're in these situations, the better educated choices we can all make as business owners.
Yeah, they promote our stuff and we promote their stuff and we have good relationships with the people there that so.
Well, I just want to say I liked what you had to say there, Dan. I think I was going to say the same thing, but you already touched on it, you know. Sometimes when you have this craziness that we're through, we rethink how to do things. And I I thought some of the suggestions, and I don't know if they're all happening, but I like the fact that sometimes maybe we stand back and rethink what we do. And we might find that there might be better things as we as we move into the future. But I really liked some of the ideas that you guys are bringing forward. I think that'll be exciting. I think that that just gives something new for some for people to say, hey, look at all these different things that they're doing now. And we might, they might be all things that we incorporate as we move on and get out of this pandemic and move on in the future. So thanks for looking, looking ahead and looking at looking at life just a little different because we had to.
You know, I think the other important thing that sometimes that we forget the value of having a coalition of all of our businesses in downtown, especially when it comes to lobbying for things that benefit the entire downtown. So Highway 41 and the improvements that are going to be made on that, I think are going to be a real game changer for downtown Chaska. And certainly having the downtown business district be a part of the voice that came forward with that made a huge difference. I mean, just I'm sure with the council, but just recently, Mindock came back and said that we could use some of the state dollars to pay for off-street parking that will be lost on Highway 41. Well, a big part of that is because we had the support of the businesses saying what an important part of that project. You know, if they lose parking on the street, how that has this ripple effect throughout downtown. Well, having a group that we can pick up the phone and call Dan or call Jen and be able to say, hey, we got to act really quickly on this. We need some help. To be able to have that ready to go instead of having to go and try to try to get, I mean, how many businesses are in downtown to try to get that whole coalition of people together quickly to go and support those things? It's just the efficiency of it and it's and it's very effective because, you know, everybody's being taxed for this. So if people are putting their money into this, it's really easy for us to say, hey, they're bought into this because their dollars are going to support this. And so it's to me, that advocacy part is going to continue to be huge. And I think it's going to be one of those that helps us as we look at things like City Square West and talk about developers, you know. You know, if they're going to invest into downtown, it's great that they see the businesses are investing into downtown. So it's, I just think there's that role that that sometimes gets overlooked.
I'm just going to add, you know, you answered my question. You must anticipate I was going to answer just what your plans are. Because I noticed the comment was that kind of the budget allocations were the same as previous years. Like previous year doesn't exist anymore, 2020 happened. So it's good to answer that because I do think that is is key is figuring out ways where people can still feel connected to downtown, get people downtown. But, you know, don't fear a huge crowd or, you know, my family has done some fall events that you typically do. And we've showed up at a site and looked to my family and said, we're going to get our apples and we're getting out of here. Because it's just, it overwhelms you and it's just, it's weird now that you feel strange when there's lots of people all of a sudden. So I commend that because I think that is important to understand and how else you can do that. I commend you for strategic planning too, because it is kind of a step back, like what makes sense. So, you know, love what you guys do, love the downtown. I think it's continued environment. I know we had a conversation, Matt and I, today about conversations about investing in downtown goes beyond the businesses and homes and everything too. Because I do think it is the charm of Chaska is that downtown area and continue to support it. And there's been businesses that have been very successful and continue and now COVID happened and it's a challenge. And I, you know, throw up the opportunity again to convince people to order takeout and, you know, Grubhub and all those things because those businesses need our dollars too, so.
Well, you know, Southwest Transit has had to make some real pivots and the city has and the individual businesses have. You know, they've, there's some very creative folks out there that are finding other ways to get things done or different aspects of their business that are now maybe more central than what they were previously. And we're no different and we're trying to figure that out too. And but again, our role is to support those businesses, to do the marketing and the promotion on their behalf and to try to get people into town to discover them, so.
I think that was really well highlighted when Dan got interviewed and Linda got from Linda Siller got interviewed on WCCO that morning about, you know, saving downtowns. And they've been doing this series all summer. And I mean, I thought that point really came across that the businesses have really done a really good pivot in this time to be able to find, you know, how do you make it? How do you make this sustainable going into the future and stuff? So I just thought that point came across really well there.
Well, I think one of the key things here is that, you know, adaptation and innovation are critical to survival of any business at any time. This pandemic isn't unique in that regard. You know, when technology hit and, you know, like the, you know, technologies changed or whether it's the social constructs of, you know, what's popular changed. Like the advent of television didn't eliminate movie theaters. The advent of the internet, you know, didn't eliminate big box stores, right? The advent of, you know, of like of digital photography didn't eliminate cameras, it just changed them, right? So, you know, but it created new opportunities for other businesses to thrive. The important thing here is that we're taking an opportunity, looking at this as an opportunity to say, how can we change what we're doing? Bring people downtown, but then and also we're all in this together as a community, right? Where we as Chaska want to continue to invest in our community, to bring people downtown to shop and to dine and experience things. How can we continue to encourage that? And this is saying that we're all in this together, not just as a city, but as businesses, as community, as people who live here, that we value our downtown. And that's really a huge part of our identity as a community. And that's, you know, why this is so important.
Yeah, I think I have the privilege of sitting in their meetings and council member Wong, you've come to some too, so you get to see this. But, I mean, part of being the best small town in Minnesota, where is our downtown? That's a piece of who we are and an important piece. And this group doesn't just do social media, marketing, promoting. I mean, they make sure downtown is clean. They'll mention when something isn't looking nice and they'll, the, it's escaping me, but working with Officer Jenke to make sure that it's a safe area. That goes out into our residents too with the business, what is it called? Why can't I think of what the business? Neighborhood watch, thank you. Implementing that and those are the creative ideas that I hear this group come up with all the time. And they, I really appreciate that you guys, they take risks, like they talk in these meetings, they do, they try something and if it does work, great. And then they keep doing it if it doesn't work. But I appreciate that they just don't want to be stagnant and I get to see that in their meetings. They're not just going to do the same thing year after year. And I think I'm really, was really excited when I heard they're going to be working with Hugh Life to kind of strategize things. Because I know that they're really a creative group that cares about our downtown. And that's such an important piece of who we are as a city, so.
Unless there's any other questions, thank you again for your continuing support and we look forward to many years of continuing this, so. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, guys, for being here. Greatly appreciated. Is there anything else from the council at this point? So am I reading this? This is a public hearing?
Yes, this is a public hearing.
Okay, so we do have to open it up for anybody from the public then at that point. Okay, so I didn't hear anything from the council, so I'm going to move on and we'll go ahead and open the public hearing at 8:22. And is there anybody that wants to speak on behalf of the special services district? Mike, is there anyone or Kevin, is there anyone in the waiting room?
There's no one on the Zoom side. I'm not sure if there's anyone in the event center.
Okay, is there anyone, councils, or anyone in the event center that wants to speak? So I take that as no?
No, there's no one here.
All right, we're going to go ahead and move to 8:23 then and close the public hearing for the special services district. And at this point, if there are no further questions, I'm running out of battery. Sorry, give me a second. Not me, not me, by other device. Are you there?
There you go.
Okay. If there are no other questions from the council, I entertain a motion to adopt resolution 2020-83. 83, yes.
So moved by Hatfield.
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
Second by Wong.
Second by Councilmember Wong to adopt resolution 2020-83, which is a public hearing, adopt resolution approving the imposition of the service charges for the 2021 downtown services district. So discussion. Hearing none. Councilmember Graff.
Yes.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Councilmember Wong.
I.
Councilmember Hubbard. Mayor Winchell, I passes 5-0. All right, moves us on to item nine. Jen and Dan, thanks for being here tonight. So with that, item nine is bills. Anyone have any questions regarding bills?
Got a few. Let's see, page two, there's across the street productions. There's an FF blue card trading, something. What is that?
So this is something we do annually. It's a blue card training is for fire officers to get trained on looking at local incident operations, command operations. So it's basically a certification they go through every year.
Is this for fire?
Yes, it's.
Is it required? I know we've done it.
I don't know. The department may have it required as part of their training for their officers.
I don't know that there's a state mandate for it, but it's it's one that it, you know, it's basically training for those larger incidents. And, you know, we have turnover in those different officer positions, so keeping up to date on that's pretty important.
Okay, sounds good.
It's a very, Mike, it's a very good class because you can, you can place people throughout your building and have it like you're operating at a fire scene. So and then they actually have simulators and things like that. So most departments, I don't, it's not, I don't believe it's a state mandate, at least the last I knew it wasn't. But most departments are doing it for their officers. Basically, it just helps them if something were to go bad, rather than saying, no, they don't have any training. They have training and, you know, so it's it's one of those things that's a good thing to have.
Very cool. I'm glad we're doing it. Okay, page four, there's an item for treats and stuff too, but it's for curling compressor. It seems incongruous. I was wondering if that's.
There's the, the business is also known as Burl's Refrigeration. So it's basically. Yeah, it's sort of interesting to have those two together as a company. But yeah, Burl's Refrigeration is the one that basically did some work on our compressor here at the curling center.
Still bait and tackle to weddings, you know, a little of everything. Okay, page five, Carver County Community Development Agency, CDA, small business emergency, business emergency, what?
So that's the $100,000 that we had from the CARES Act that went to the businesses. So there was 10 businesses at $10,000 apiece.
Okay, got it. So this is basically providing, just as a transfer of funding back over there. Yeah, they're administering the program, so. Okay, got it. Let's see, page seven, contact engineered solutions. There's a replacement culvert at ID something, but it's cut off.
The IDS trail, so the IDS trail is basically the one, it's the Oak Ridge Trail.
It's kind of funny that it still lists IDS there. Got it.
Slow to change.
I still call it IDS because I can never think of Oak Ridge.
Yeah.
Okay, page eight, cooler mechanical, it's just, so I think I know what this is, but I'm guessing this is, it's a 50% down payment on the thermostat. I'm guessing that's one of the air purifiers for the community center or?
Oh, this is a water heat recovery system.
Water heat recovery.
That's, that's actually in our arena.
But I asked then. Okay, and then page 13, hydro designs on device test managed MGT September 2020. I'm guessing that's for the, was it for the water treatment or?
Yeah, it's for the water treatment plant. So it's basically our monthly for, we have to go through RPZ training, which is a pressure zone or testing, I mean. So it's, it's a testing that we have to do each month in the water treatment plant.
Just like main typical main stuff.
Yep.
Okay, page 15, mango group, Shadowwood improvement, but I didn't see what the improvement was.
It's drainage work, so it was tile and catch basin work that was done and lawn repairs. So I believe this is up in the actual park, wasn't it, up in Shadowwood Park?
Oh, this was, this was the case in Shadowwood Park. There was a residential area that had been destroyed.
Okay, cool. And then the last one, there's on pages 16 and 23, there's a reference to a city street clock restoration. Where is that clock?
So if you've noticed it before, right next to our entrance sign to City Hall Plaza, right out on 41, there's an old time clock. The old time clock hasn't worked for a while because it has, it was very old time. But it. Yeah, so our electric crew actually went and they did all the work themselves and basically refurbished it. So the clock's working now, it's lit up and so it shows accurate time.
So it's right, it's right in the corner in front of City Hall there or?
It's, it's actually, if you remember.
By the old barber shop.
Glenn's Barber Shop, right in front of Glenn's Barber Shop there.
Just never paid attention to it, you know.
Looks like something you see at Disney World. It's one of those old.
And be like, oh.
You will, you will. You've noticed it. You just, you're not thinking of it.
Just never paid attention.
Clock out of the Dickens era.
Stuff like that, I kind of feel like we should be making, I mean, I don't know, there's like, I'm sure there's a story to be told about that clock, why it's there. There's, I mean, if that clock could tell a story, I'm sure it would, but just stuff like that.
1855, there was a thunderstorm and the thunder.
That was a real story. No, I knew exactly where he was going right away. That's like not even in my top.
Have been the story, that would have been.
All right, all right, let's get back.
Your opportunity for the downtown business alliance.
Yes, will generate a little bit of, a little bit of activity there.
They don't have to be.
Isn't he in the road, just like down 41?
Stories are just stories.
Story. Great, that's all I got. On that note, lightning strikes twice.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Hey, I, I, I do have a question, Matt. Um, I, I, I saw in the bills, um, that there was some, uh, work done on Isabel, and then we got a very nice note from a resident there about fixing, what happened there?
Well, it's, Brian could probably explain it the best, you'll probably want to go up to the microphone.
Yeah. I guess I hadn't, I mean, I didn't, not that I would know, but apparently there, I saw a number of different, uh, bills in here on Isabel, and then we got that very nice, nice, uh, uh, note from Jeff Heinz, Heinz. Um, about, hints, yeah, that's right, hints, about, uh, what great work and how courteous all of our workers were, so I was just curious what happened there.
So these are, projects like this are really identified really through our stormwater program, which we're gonna talk about a little bit later, but, this, what, people's sump pumps, when they dump out onto the roadway, if there's enough of them, they end up destroying really the curbs, the streets, really prematurely. So we, we take these as a whole and kind of triage them, you know, prioritize them, and this one actually just kind of came up because of some other reasons with some curb, but, uh, we were able to, um, one, go out and fix the curb and, um, create this sump pump project, where we, where we create, um, drains, um, not within the yard, so it was in the road right away, and people are able to connect into them, and again, this isn't all over, but this is, these are always after the fact, after construction, um, but, um, another project that went well.
Good. Well, thank everyone, because that was quite the note that he sent, uh, talking about how, how, uh, courteous all of our employees were, so. Pretty often, I know that they'll look at it and go, so what, who cares, but it's still, things like that are noticed. And obviously the residents noticed it, so. All right, anyone else on a bill? If not, entertain a motion, pay the bills.
So moved by Wong.
Motion, motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second by Councilmember Gra.
Second by Councilmember Gra. Discussion. Hearing done, Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Councilmember, uh, Wong.
Aye.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Yes.
Councilmember Gra.
Aye.
Mayor Winchell, yes, passes five oh. All right, uh, moves us to, uh, other business, uh, let's start with, uh, Councilmember Gra.
Uh, I got a couple of quick questions, um, tree lighting, I know we talked about hometown holiday and how that's not gonna exist in the way it has in the past, is there some conversation about fire, the tree lighting, is that still gonna happen, is that?
Yeah, we're, we are having discussion, I mean, the tree's going up actually in November eleventh, and we're, we've been having some discussions at the ELC about what would be appropriate for sort of, if we were gonna have something, now there's not gonna be a hundred club, uh, that night, that, that's gonna be a virtual event, so there won't be all the crowds that are down here normally, so we're still sort of in discussions about exactly what to do with that, and, um, I, you know, it might be a good outdoor, I mean, there's not many outdoor things we can do much, you know, especially after tomorrow getting five inches of snow, but, um, but we are looking at doing potentially something with that.
And I would assume that, like, the, uh, C squared tree lighting would be similar to, potentially?
That, I think, would be less likely to happen, because that's always been part of the hometown holiday events, I think we probably would, we'll just light that when we get it decorated. If we do anything with the tree lighting, it'll be this one here.
Okay, that's good, I just, it is, when you say November eleventh, it's less than a month away, like.
Yes.
Don't know where it's going, um, just a question for clarification, if it's intentional, or if it's just kind of happenstance of construction projects, but on the, uh, bottom of the hill, Big Woods Boulevard and Chaska Boulevard, there seems to be quite bumpy surface of like tar, I don't know if that was intense, because you're going downhill and it does create more grip, or if it's just a construction issue that, as constructions, because it stopped there, but it is kind of a rough road all of a sudden, because you kind of have blobs of tar that kind of hardened. In some aspects, it makes sense that maybe.
I don't think it was purposeful.
You, I can answer that, Matt. If you want me to.
Yep.
So that happened from the trucks when Mueller's, uh, put the final wear code on in, uh, part of southwest Chaska area, and for some reason their trucks were dropping that, because the day that that was happening, um, I thought, what is going, I would, I had to go up to take care of a church cemetery, I thought, because we redid this church cemetery, I thought, what happened, why did this happen, well, it was the trucks out of Mueller's that, when they're sitting there at the light, waiting for the light to change, it's just droppings falling off the truck.
So did it get cleaned up, or just is what it is? Because it is.
I, I don't know, that would be something, if Brian decides to call the county, I don't know.
Uh, we, I don't even know anything about it, you do, okay.
So, really, how that condition happens is, the warmer temps, over tech, it just, it just wraps up the trucks. Typically, over time, they go away, uh, I know, uh, Overdura Road also has some that from, um, a job that was done in Victoria this year, if I, it's almost all gone. We actually, in past projects, we've had, we've sent equipment out there to try to scrape it. It's simply just where it's on, and it will break its spot between where it was and what's out there.
I'm sure that snow removal tomorrow might help wear that off a little faster as the trucks, but, yeah, just kind of curious, because I, I mean, it, it just, it's noticeable, I don't always go that direction now with the interchange, but it kind of hit it, and you're, it's a little bit of a bumpy road, so, okay. Um, and then my last comment, uh, because we haven't talked about COVID enough in the last eight months and tonight, uh, just to continue, I feel like I always have an opportunity to speak that, um, you know, numbers in Minnesota are rising, numbers in Minnesota across, or across the Midwest are rising. Uh, I think, you know, it worries me come winter, because it's not, even though it's kind of snow tomorrow, it's, does it, it's not technically winter yet, and numbers are starting to grow, so just taking the opportunity in the audience to say, you know, continue to wear a mask, stay six feet apart, you know, if you're, stay home if you don't feel sick, uh, and then the big thing that I would say, just from my other life, my work life, um, I just spend a fair share of talking to people who are not feeling well, and the increase in the, well, it's just a cold conversation, I was having a conversation with Taylor a little bit about her, uh, footwear, um, isn't really gonna work, it just, it, it just, it, it's not a normal year where you can just say, yep, this is just a normal cold, and as much as that pains people to, to maybe have to go to test it or anything like that, just keep that in mind, I, I, I think it's tough with kids, you know, I, I, I have two young kids too, and it's kind of watching them, like, is, they're gonna get cold, kids get colds, right, and we all get colds, so just keep that in mind, because I think in a normal year, that's kind of the attitude we've taken, you know, like, you kind of get the cough, get the runny nose, and maybe a headache, and you're like, oh, it's, you know, it's just, it's just a cold, uh, I've heard that a lot, um, I still quarantine those people. Uh, so don't fall into that trap, I, you know, you're probably right, it probably is a cold, but you, you gotta go get tested, get it checked out, because it could be much worse, so, just want to put that reminder back out to the community, to anyone who's watching and listening at home. And that is all I have.
Thank you, sir, uh, Councilmember Wong.
Uh, I've got a few things, since the last time we met, we have the food distribution event in Chaska at the Gedney Pickle Factory, or the former Pickle Factory, um, served five hundred and eight families and a net of seventeen hundred and ninety-four people, includes six hundred and eighty-one children, eight hundred and ninety-six adults, and two hundred and seventeen seniors who were fed through that event. Um, a special thank you to the City of Chaska, Esperanza, and the CAP Agency, St. John's Lutheran Church, and Continental Engineering Manufacturing for all their support in that. Um, the Trail of Fun, that's taking place on Saturday, October twenty-third, uh, from four to eights full, um, I went to sign up for that, and it's like, wow, it's completely sold out, so. Yeah, so it's one of those things, it's probably like, you know, State Fair, or the, you know, or the, uh, the Renaissance Festival, which had the big, you know, everything's sold out right away, so I think, you know, it's, there's a huge kind of demand for that, I kind of wish that they could do it longer, or do a second round of it or something, but, you know, it's, you know, it is what it is, but, you know, on the other hand, I'm glad that that event's already, like, it's gonna be super successful, so I'm excited about that, but they can't go, so, I was too late in the draw on that one. Um, also, um, you know, love this new City of Chaska website, so kudos to, you know, Kevin and all the team who, like, contributed to that, I know Park and Rack and others, um, you know, worked hard on them, you know, working to, you know, make that accessible and to, you know, make it new and fresh, so looks really great, um, good job on that. And also finally, congratulations to the Chaska Hawks football team, since the last time we met, they've actually played two games, the first opening game of the season, where they defeated St. Louis, part forty-four to seven, and congratulations on the, the, the quick change where they were gonna play Chanhasan, and then switched to, um, Robbinsdale Armstrong, and managed to do a come-from-behind victory of nineteen to twelve, so, uh, great game, and congratulations to the Hawks football team, so, um, and then the next game is on the twenty-third versus Orinham at home, so, uh, hopefully that goes well as well, knock on wood. So that's all I've got.
Thank you, Councilmember Hubbard.
Thank you, um, just a couple of things, uh, uh, I also went to the distribution event, it was wonderful, and, um, uh, great to see those programs, I hope they continue, um, as there's definitely a need with kind of resources.
Have another one in November and December they'll be doing.
Do they? Okay, yeah, so, um, I'm just, I'm grateful for those opportunities, um, because you really see the need when you, um, help out and volunteer at them, and, uh, since the last time, uh, I know Mayor and Councilmember Wong, we attended the ribbon cutting for, uh, Highway forty-one runabout, and then the groundbreaking for the new, the loop at Chaska there, so that was a very windy, but wonderful event, so are you wearing your T-shirt? I was gonna wear mine.
I've been out for somebody who lifted their shirt, but.
That's very true. Uh, I have, uh, I'm a part of the elected leaders of Carver County, there's an October twenty-seventh meeting, and that's gonna be talking about affordable housing. Um, I also wanted to touch on, I'm in that little group with Sheriff Camrood and some, um, other community leaders, faith leaders, citizens, uh, and our own police chief, uh, and we met this last week, and we were talking about the mental health professional that is now on, um, I just wanted to, like, raise awareness, I guess, publicly, because, you know, they've been trying to get the word out that, that this, she's, you know, been orientated, she's, you know, starting to, she's gonna start responding to calls, as she hasn't already here, um, last week, so, uh, I feel like that's just one of those things that we all kind of need to do, that spreading of the words of other community members know, and that they know that this resource is available, I think that would be a great thing for Alton County and also City of Chaska, um, just sounds like there's a little bit of a nice partnership there.
Well, and a huge kudos to the Sheriff's Department for making that a baseline service. Um, that's great, because now it's available to everybody in the county. Um, I, I think it's a great resource, I think it's gonna be a tremendous asset to us, so I think it's great.
Yeah, and I really, I mean, a huge shout out to both of those gentlemen, um, being the positions of leadership that they are, to work together to improve, you know, the relationship of policing, you know, and services in our community and county as a whole, it's great to have them work together, collaborate, um, and, uh, and see that in action, so it's great. Uh, I think that was, yeah, everything that I had to say at this time, there was something, but I can't remember what it was.
Hey, Taylor, um, I, I saw that article in the paper about, about that, um, I don't know the proper name for it, but, go out and help with mental health issue calls. Is that available twenty-four seven, or how, what, what is the setup on that?
I don't know the answer to that question, I want to.
The answer is, yes.
Is, okay.
But it's, it's like an on-call sort of system in the after hours, where they have sort of a triage team, uh, to respond to it, the actual individual works from, I think it's one PM to ten PM, uh, i- is when the core hours that she's actually working.
Okay, is, is, is then, is she the only, is, is she called a therapist? Is she the only one that's out there?
Well, she, she's sort of like, there's a sort, there's sort of a team behind, she, she's the, she's the only one that's specially trained in this.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, one of the things, I guess, I forgot to mention, and, and I don't want to steal the police, police chief's thunder, but I got to kind of hear a little bit of a preview of how many people responded back to our community report, and he said, like, between four to five hundred people have responded back so far, which I thought was amazing.
He's gonna be putting that into, uh, summary, uh, report.
I was like, I don't want to steal his, but I, I was pretty blown away when I heard of that response, that was great. That was what I forgot, so.
Is there a, is there a day when that, uh, has to be completed and in by? Anybody know?
I didn't see a date of action on it.
I don't think there was a date on that.
There was no deadline to that, it was, it was open-ended.
Okay. Okay. All right, uh, Councilmember Hubbard, you're good then?
Good.
Was that yes?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, there's a delay when I, when I get, and I miss part of it.
Okay.
Um, Councilmember Hatfield.
Um, just a couple of things, uh, October twenty-third, there's a squad car story time with the Carver County Library System, and, um, Officer Julie Jenke will do that, and those have always been a hit in person, but this is, I believe, an online event, so that's, um, good for the little ones, and then same kind of idea, but, uh, different, the, the Police Department, um, coffee with a cop on October twenty-fourth and National Drug Takeback Day. So prescriptions that you have around your house that could be, um, that are no longer in use, uh, you can go give those back and meet our new peace, Police of Chief, wow, Chief of Police, um, if you haven't met him yet, so that's on October twenty-fourth at eight thirty to nine thirty, um, at the Caribou, the South Caribou.
So, so, Councilmember Hatfield, did, did I miss something? Did you say the City of Chaska's doing that? Normally, that's the county.
Well, I think it is the county, so within, I think it's like partner, I don't, it's coffee with a cop on that day, um, but I think you can go turn it in at the, yes, you can go turn it at the event, uh, if you can't make it during that time, you can go to the permanent collection box that's at the county car, Carver County Sheriff's Office, um, at the courthouse, so you can bring it to that event, or if you can't go in that one hour to the permanent box.
Oh, okay, all right, thanks.
Words are hard. Um, and then, the only other thing, I had a question, it was from the biweekly, so I don't know, Matt, if you want to answer this, but, um, I love this, don't hate me, I loved the first Beyond the Budget video, and I think you said there was two more in the biweekly, but I just haven't actually seen them, are they on YouTube, or did I get blocked?
No, Michaela, or Councilmember Hatfield, we're, uh, we're working on them, I actually have one in production today, so it'll come out tomorrow, we got a little delayed by, um, the launch of the website and some other things that kind of came up, but, uh, they will be coming out in short order, so sorry, there has been a delay on those.
That, and that's okay, I was just confused, I was like, I didn't see those, I read it, and then I was like, wait.
We would never block you.
Beyond the Budget sort of came, it was like, it was sort of like a Disney sort of thing.
It, it takes a while to get the sparkles on the screen, so.
Okay, that's, I was wondering, is just if it was somewhere.
We have, we have two in the queue, and, and, and Brian's debut will, will come tomorrow, I, I have it all fired up and ready to roll.
So exciting, okay, thanks, that's, um, all I had.
Okay, um, um, Nate, why don't you, will you mention the other letter that we got, uh, um, from, um, the lady? Oh, I don't have her name in front of me, and I gotta leave the screen, the other thank you note we got, beside the one from Jeff?
There was two more.
Sure, yeah.
Two more, oh, well, I only saw.
So for the audience out there, um, this is in reference to, shoot, I'm gonna blank on which day it was, but last.
Thursday.
Was it Thursday? Yeah, last week, Thursday. Yeah, last week, Thursday, um we did light up the ban shell uh here at, at the uh, at Fireman's Park, um to acknowledge and what, I'm struggling.
Spirit Day, Spirit Day.
Spirit Day, yes, Spirit Day, which is a, which is actually a new, I believe, a new designated day to help um, you know, bring to light uh the LGBTQ communities, in particular um young adults and 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 children who may be targeted for um, you know, being a part of that community um and bullied as a result of that, so um the intent there was to stand up to that and and just bring um attention to that. And uh so we put a post out, um it was well received, and we've had a couple folks send their thanks our way um for doing that, so that was an effort that took a team, um we got it, we got it done, and so happy to be a part of that.
And there, was there another one beside the one from Jeff that I mentioned already?
There, there was two, two received about that, about that event, Spirit Day.
Oh, okay, okay, I didn't see that one.
It it was, they were pretty heartwarming uh messages, because they were parents who have kids that have been bullied because of that, and just thought it was just really cool that the community would do something to make their kids feel like they're part of the community.
Yep, I I read the one, and it was very heartfelt, without a doubt, so, all right. Uh Nate, do you have anything else?
That's.
Did you say no?
No, I do not, no, no additional updates.
How about, I know Luke's in the audience, has Luke got anything?
I think it's a no. Uh you know, I just want to pass along condolences to my wife, she lost her best friend today, and I know it's really tough for her to uh be home tonight with the kids and and just want her to know I'm thinking of her, and uh I know it's a tough day for her, so.
Well. Our condolences, Anne. All right, um I just have a a couple things here. Um has anybody heard about the Veterans Day program at the middle school, I assume that's canceled? Um and we'll see if we can kind of find that out between now and, or we'll have another meeting.
I'll check on that, I know that they were still looking at doing something, I thought.
I'm I'm assuming it's going to be virtual, but you you just, I don't know. Um I um went by Highway one oh one at the Lower Y today, the uh bridge for the Southwest Regional Trail is now up and over the new Highway one oh one, I see they're putting center median or center uh Jersey barriers, they're pouring the new, I don't know if they're called Jersey barriers, I know the, the mobile ones are Jersey, but anyways, they're pouring them, and so uh and I did find out, I was originally, it was told that that road wasn't going to open, but that road is going to open early November, I believe, so um the 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 hill will be done, but the the upper part by the mustard seed won't be quite ready yet, or won't be ready till next year, without a doubt, so. Um we have a council meeting November second, which is the night before the general election, so um if you haven't voted, uh make sure you take the time to uh go out and vote. Um also make sure you research your candidates, if you're uncertain on, on who you should vote for, I know there's a lot of things being put out, I never know what's true and what's not true, so do your own research, um make up your own decision, and when you go in a booth, you're uh an educated voter, so I hope you all take that time to um do that, and I think that's it for me, uh last call from anyone, if not, I would look for a motion to adjourn, um for the folks at home, we are going to stay on this site for, to finish a work session, so um but otherwise, uh I would entertain a motion.
Last thing to say.
Yeah, I, real quick, uh Councilmember Hubbard brought up about the Fall Cleanup Day is on
Oh.
Uh the last, it's on Saturday, October thirty-first, from eight AM to two PM, but I think we're opening it up on Friday night, too, right?
I, I believe it's the thirtieth and the thirty-first, I saw that, too.
What time on Friday night? Okay.
Good call, I forgot about that one. Anybody else got anything before we uh move to adjournment? All right, uh motion to adjourn.
So who, Ray Wong?
Motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second by Hubbard.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard, um all right, with that, Councilmember Wong.
Aye.
Uh Councilmember Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilmember Gra.
Yes.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Councilmember Wind Shuttle, aye, passes five oh, we'll see you on November second, um have a great Halloween, um enjoy the city event.